We can stand for the slide.
Six minutes.
Oh, God. I really get to work today.
Yeah.
I'm going to use this flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, made visible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. Say we're going to start this evening with an Oakland Schools Board of Education election. Dr. Bernia.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President, members of the board. This week on Thursday, part of the regular board agenda is for you to make a designation about the election for the Oakland Schools Board of Education. And so in order for us to prepare the resolution, we set aside this time. So the board needs to decide on an alternate representative. The board selected Mr. Siegler to represent the board during our organizational meeting, but does need to declare who an alternate representative will be. And then this is the opportunity for the board to talk about which two candidates you want to support so we can make sure that we have the resolution prepared for you on Thursday evening.
Okay, thank you. Say Ms. Levin kindly volunteer her services to be the alternate on that committee. So, thank you, Ms. Levin. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Siegler since he's there all the time.
Not all the time.
All the time.
We had the opportunity of interviewing three of the candidates for the OCSBA board.
Is it Oakland Schools or?
Oakland Schools.
Okay.
Oakland School Board Association.
No. Which one is it?
Oakland Schools Board of Directors.
Is it OCSBA or Oakland Schools?
OCSBA.
Interview the candidates for Oakland Schools.
Correct.
Got it.
And we basically very similar situation to what we did here with a set of questions and history and overall discussion. We also did a video that was sent to all of the members for viewing. Based on that, recommendation would be for Carol Finkelstein, who is currently on the West Bloomfield Board of Education, and Mark Katz, who is currently on the Oakland Schools Board, to be our nominations for the open positions.
Any discussion?
Mrs. Kaplan.
Mrs. Casas Grande.
Yeah, so I actually, that is who I would choose as well, having known both of them for as long as I have and the type of service that they provided to their districts and for the community, et cetera. So I'm in support of that. Thanks.
Mrs. Kaplan.
Mrs. Levin.
Thank you. I am halfway in support of that. I support Carol Finkelstein for one of those positions. I watched the interviews and I am very intrigued by Mr. Scott, Dr. Scott, I think he is. And I think that he provides a different perspective. I think that Mr. Katz has served wonderfully for years and years, a long, long time. I also think there's a time and a place for new and different to take a seat at the table sometimes. And I think that Dr. Scott's experience and involvement is intriguing and I would support him for that second spot.
Any other discussion?
Mrs. Kaplan.
Mrs. Casas Grande.
So I absolutely, you know, respect your thoughts there. I would just say that I get a little concerned when we say that if somebody's been doing it for a while. I know that personally, I'm better at my jobs as I do them. And let me just be maybe a little more specific about why I support Katz. So I came in to this role almost 16 years ago and I did a lot of legislative stuff. I actually sat doing the legislative stuff with him and he has a very good grasp of what it takes to make an impact. And I think the experience he has just really adds to that, right? I'm not saying that I don't think that that third candidate is, could do the job, right? I think that could. I just know from my experience of how Mark does stuff and all the leadership he's done across, that I think that's what we need and we also need some of that historical perspective. And I think that he brings that as well. So just my kind of, I guess, comments to yours.
Mr. Siegler.
Echoing what Mrs. Casas Grande said, Mr. Katz is very knowledgeable in his current position and has been knowledgeable for all the years that I've known him. He has great impetus with our representatives in Lansing as well as in Washington. He's in constant contact with people that we, within the education community, need to help us within our county and within our state. He lives and breathes school and children. He was a very strong board member when he was in Berkeley and I feel he is an even stronger board member now on the Oakland Schools Board.
Thank you. Ms. Tice, Ms. Fernandez, do you have any? No? Okay. I mean, I can add my comments first. I agree with Carol and with Mark. I've known them for a little while. And when I first became a board member, I did travel with Mr. Katz to Washington DC. And having his knowledge and his advocacy while we were there was phenomenal. And I, not saying that the other candidate would not be able to step into that role and have that kind of base, but I do know his base and how he advocates and his priorities. And I do feel that he is a fantastic, you know, candidate for the position.
So I'm just going to say that I think Carol Finkelstein, to me, is absolutely a strong candidate and I appreciate her and I wholly endorse that. With respect to the other two that have been discussed today, you know, I do feel like this organization could use an infusion of the next generation of support. And in the past, we've had some, you know, budget questions and, you know, there's just been a number of areas where there have been a lot of questions about, you know, the proposed approach. And so I don't, I don't, I think that it's healthy and I don't know that just having the same people on the same boards with a lot of experience, you know, as long as there's enough experience across the board would be enough for me to hope that we don't bring in somebody new and give somebody else a shot.
From what I'm hearing, that we're all pretty much in agreement for Ms. Finkelstein. And then, I mean, we can take a vote with regards to Mr. Katz?
Well, for the record, you're not going to vote tonight.
I was guessing.
There's no vote tonight.
Oh, okay. Oh, gotcha.
This is for us to prepare the resolution.
Okay.
So you still have some time between now and Thursday, if board members want to go back and watch the candidate video again or continue that conversation. But that, you don't have to, we're not voting on anything tonight. This is just for us to prepare the resolution. So at this point, I have that Mr. Siegler is the designee, Mrs. Levin is the alternate. The consensus is around Carol Finkelstein is clear. And then we can just leave the, we can, we could fill in the rest of it on the evening, on the evening of. Part of the purpose of this is to do what we just did, to let the board hear where everybody's coming from. And then you can go back and re-watch the video again and do a little bit more thinking and then come back on Thursday night and that'll be just fine. Okay?
Perfect. Thank you. Sold. Okay, moving on to our board candidate interview process. Dr. Bernia.
Thank you very much. So the board elected to have a, for the purposes of efficiency, because we had so many applicants, the board elected to have some board members kind of, I decide on that first round of candidates based on applications to review. And so the first step in the process for tonight is to make sure that the entire board is comfortable with that and is comfortable moving forward with the interviews. And it's important to note, one of our candidates backed out just a little while ago. And so it will be four candidates that is that first tier for the board to consider. So if you're comfortable, we could exercise a motion and then take a roll call vote and then we can get started with the process.
Mrs. Levin.
I move that the Board of Education proceed with interviewing the five candidate, or four candidates scheduled for tonight in the order presented.
Support.
Okay, we're going to start with Mr. Siegler?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm not in alphabetical order, but they're not in alphabetical order at the table, so.
Sorry about that, you guys. Mrs. Casas Grande.
Yes.
Mrs. Fernandez.
Yes.
Mrs. Levin.
Yes.
Mr. Siegler.
Yes.
Ms. Tice.
Yes.
And Mrs. Kaplan.
Yes.
All right. Madam President or Madam Vice President, if you want to invite the first candidate forward?
Say yes, I would love to. I'd love to invite forward our first candidate, which is Andrea Zellner. Please make yourself comfortable at the table.
In the hot seat.
In the hot seat, yeah.
Most comfortable seat in the room.
Oh, my. All right. Well, thank you for having me.
Well, thank you. Everybody ready? Okay. Mrs. Zellner, why do you want to be appointed to the school board? And if you're selected, what do you hope to accomplish while serving?
Well, first of all, I want to really thank you again for this opportunity and thank you for all of your service because I know what a thankless task being on a school board can be. And for me, the reason that I'm here today is because I am a proud product of Wild Lake Schools. I was a Keith Dragon and then I was a smart Trojan and then I was a Wild Lake Central Viking. And my own children have been raised here, so they were also Keith Dragons and they were Trojans, but unfortunately, they're northern knights. So I'm really sad about that because I love singing the Wild Lake Central Fight Song and I hope to close my interview tonight with all of you in a sing-along. I'm just kidding. We're not going to do that. But that is why I wanted to really, to present myself here to you as a potential interim board member to serve in that capacity. I really love education. I'm an educator. I have 20 years of service in public education. And for me, what I'm really interested in is what's best for kids. And being on a school board is really, you are the stewards of what's best for kids. And to me, that's very important. And I want to make sure that we have that voice at the table. And so that is what I hope to bring and that is why I'm here.
Thank you.
What makes you a valuable representative of the district as a school board member?
What do you think you bring to the district?
Yeah, so because I think I've been an educator for so long and I love talking about education, I do all kinds of crazy things ever since I started in education. So for instance, I always throw my hat in the ring for all the fun things. So I was a freshman cheerleading coach when I was a brand-new baby teacher, even though I've never been a cheerleader, but they just needed a grown-up. And all the way to, more recently, I support the spelling bee for Oakland County. So I think because I'm always running around doing all those bits and bobs in my roles, a lot of my neighbors and friends come to me for help. So I do work at Oakland Schools, so it was really fun for me to hear you all deciding who will be in charge of my job in a few weeks. So at Oakland Schools, I have the opportunity to just sort of be all over the county and learn so much about so many systems. And because of that, people ask me all the time. They'll have an issue with a teacher or they're not understanding something with their IEP or 504 process or something is happening where there's some friction in the experience of the child's schooling. And so they'll come to me, even my dentist, like, I'm like in the chair and he's asking me questions about our schools in Wild Lake. And so because of that, I'm very tenacious. I always want to give people an answer. These systems are big, they can be opaque, and so sometimes people don't understand how to get that advocacy that they need for their kid. And so because of that, many people have told me, you should run for the school board. And I'm always like, listen, I'm already on a board. I've just finished my board experience with the Michigan Council of Teachers of English. I'm too busy, that's not for me right now. But when this opening came and I saw that plea go out to the community, I thought, well, maybe it's time. Maybe this is the moment where I can at least come here, talk to all of you and talk about why it's so important to center the voices of our students. And to me, that is at the core of who I am. I am very interested in making sure that we are serving our community by serving our most precious members of our community, and those are our kids. I certainly benefited from the educational experience that I had here. I'm watching my kids have those benefits as well. And I want to make sure that we can ensure that for the future. So that's what I hope to bring here if I am chosen.
Thank you. What do you see as a board member's role in the day-to-day operations and decisions in the district? Can you explain to us what you consider to be the most important duties of a board member?
Yeah, thanks for that question. So thinking about the day-to-day work of the school board, obviously, the most public version of that is what we're doing here today, that we're serving the public in this open meeting and showing them that we are here to do the work and the business of the community. So that's really the start of it. But behind that is an openness to listen, some curiosity, some empathy. All of those are part of the work to me, that we're showing up, ready to talk, but mostly to listen and to make sure that we're centering the voices of our students and making sure that they're having that best educational experience. After that, it's really what I was talking about before. We go to backyard barbecues and what are we talking about? We're talking about what's happening with our kids. And we're out in the community. And so for me, the school board is really that representative of the community and making sure that we're supporting what the community is interested in and being that voice for them as well. After that, it's one of the big, huge benefits that I have in my job right now, as I said, is I get to be all over the county. And what I see when I'm around the county are often leadership teams and school boards working together for a shared vision that is just unstoppable. The opportunities for students when leadership is working together like that is just unparalleled. And so to me, that's a really huge part of it. And finally, as a school board member, we're thinking about the responsibility of the school board to the community. So that means that school boards are responsible for thinking about managing the assets of the district, so finances, budgets, buildings, personnel. All of those aspects are part of school board service and, you know, the nitty-gritty of it that I think a lot of people may not understand is part of a school board. But really, it's a supporting role in celebrating what's happening in our schools, but also setting a vision that we can all move towards in the future.
Thank you. How would you balance community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff considerations, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how you would vote on an issue?
So I do not envy of all the decisions you've had to make up until now because from where I sit, the decisions of a school board often don't have easy answers. And so there are a lot of competing concerns. As you heard me say earlier, I'm first and foremost interested in are we serving our students to the best of our ability, and every student, no matter how they're coming to us in our buildings. And so for me, the student voice is at the center. Also, when I think about state and federal laws, often those are written with the intention, whether the impact is that way, but the intention is often to protect our kids. And so I think weighing those and the real consequences if we're in violation is important. After that, it's really community concern. So as we talked earlier, we are the voice of the community. We are here to represent the community. No matter what my personal beliefs are, that is not salient to the vote. It is more about thinking about all the diversity of opinions and we really want to be making sure that we're thinking about that. And, you know, I am not here really about my personal beliefs, other than that I really support what happens for kids. I know sometimes people run for the school board because they have an issue that they're passionate about. And for me, my passion is really about what's best for kids. Because no matter where we're sitting in terms of our opinions and personal beliefs, there is wisdom in a different dissenting voice. And hearing that wisdom and making sure that we are able to handle the diversity of opinions, like, that's what we're doing here. That is the point of public education, is to build this beautiful democracy we have. And having this beautiful democracy means we do have different opinions and we have to negotiate that. And I am totally quoting from Ginny Profetti, who was my AP US History teacher, and she taught me that. She taught me that right here in Wild Lake, at Wild Lake Central.
So what do you believe, sorry. What do you believe are the top issues facing our school district and why?
So I think probably most obviously is the departure of Dr. Bernia and congratulations again. And also the departure on the school board. So we've lost, we're losing some leadership. And oftentimes, leadership transitions can be really difficult to weather. I think that with the right support from the school board as you enter into the search can really smooth the waters because leadership transitions are an opportunity for change. And we want to make sure that we're supporting that change while not losing the beautiful work that has come before. Because obviously, Wild Lake is known for its excellent education. We don't want to lose that. We want to take that into the future. But leadership transitions are hard. People get unsure and they get worried. And so that's going to be an issue that the board will have to face. When I think about school boards, there's also some more generalizable issues that are facing school boards all over the county and in the state, which is population. Populations of students kind of go up and down. It's not easy to open up a building if you've got 500 extra first graders or you have 500 fewer, then what do you do with all the extra space you have? Managing the assets of the district and thinking through and looking ahead in terms of population projections, I think, is like a really tricky part of any school board service. And then also, I think the third one is just, you know, the diversity of opinions that we have. We have a huge school district, it's like 110,000 people live here, all of whom are paying taxes to make sure that we educate our children to the best of our ability and we all have different opinions about that. And everybody is so passionate because these are kids and we want to do what's best for kids. And sometimes we can be in conflict with each other. And so again, to hearken back to my earlier answer, I think it's really important for the board to consider how we are balancing the needs of all of those voices and making sure that they're heard and that we're really carefully considering those differing opinions and showing the kids how to get along, you know? That's really a big life lesson.
So you've answered a few questions here. I always like to say, if you want to get a drink of water, feel free.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And then I will go ahead and ask the question.
And Dr. Bernia did too, so I don't feel alone.
This one is a little bit long, it's a two-parter. And I think you had the questions beforehand, but.
Ahead of time, yeah.
How do you approach making a decision where there is no clear right answer and anyone's answer or action will not satisfy all constituents? Please tell us about a time when this happened and how you handled it.
Yeah, so these are the really fun ones. I'm just kidding, they're not fun at all. There's so many times where I think when we're really trying to do the right thing and we're working really hard for that, that there really isn't a clear right answer. And I think a lot of times, most school boards are faced with those. For me, it really goes to the same things that make our democracy beautiful, really listening to all the voices. Because I can get my own view and I want to make sure that I'm broadening that view because someone might have a perspective that I just wasn't seeing without that diversity of opinion. And so that, to me, is really the main way that I go about making difficult decisions. Of course, it always has to pass through the gate of, is this best for kids? Because if we can't pass through that gate, then anything else is moot. We are not going to consider that anymore. For me, in my own personal lead- For me, in my own personal leadership journey through serving with the Michigan Council of Teachers of English, we also made all of our decisions, just like on a school board, as a collective. There was really only one time where I had to, like, make a hard decision all by myself. And that was when I was functioning as our president-elect and our conference chair, and it was in that really strange time around COVID, where we're like, are we coming back? Are we not coming back? And a different state organization had come back face-to-face, and they had lost money on their conference, because people weren't feeling confident coming face-to-face. And my conference was happening six months later, but I had to get that contract for the venue, and I had to make this decision. I had to project. And my committee was completely split on what we should do. And so for me, I really had to listen deeply. I had to, again, take into consideration where everyone was sitting. I had people from all over the state coming, and that was a really, really hard decision. And yeah, that is pretty much how I went about it, is I had to make a decision that not everyone agreed with, and I really had to explain to everybody why I was making the decision I made and hope that it was the best. And if there were places where I felt like it wasn't the best, having that mea culpa and saying, here was the best decision I can make at the time with the data that I had, and hopefully it went on. But it did turn out okay, so.
Out of curiosity, what decision did you make?
I decided to hold it virtually, and that ended up being a good thing, because we made some money on it. And so we had enough of a cushion so that when we did come back face-to-face a few months later, we had enough of a cushion. And we were really, we were kind of creative in having watch parties where people could come together face-to-face, so there was kind of a hybrid at that moment. That was a very tough decision.
Thank you. Your final question. See, board member's service is a serious commitment and can be both rewarding and challenging. Tell us with examples why you are committed to Wild Lake Schools.
So to start back at the beginning, this is my home. This is my community. You are my neighbors. And to me, there is no greater calling than being of service. My family raised me with always thinking about what we could give rather than what we could get, that really, we're looking in someone else's bowl, not to see how much they have, but to make sure that they had enough. And that was really how I was raised, and that's how I raised my boys as well. And this commitment is very serious to me, because I can't think of anything more important than our education system, because that is the gateway to every success they're going to have beyond. And when I was a brand-new baby teacher, I remember being so worried that someday I would be that teacher that the kids said, oh, I had this teacher. I couldn't have a bad day. Do you know what I mean? Because I just didn't want the kids to have a bad day, because I had a bad day. And I took that really seriously, and I would bring that same commitment here, that no matter what it is, I'm going to roll up my sleeves and I'm going to do it, whether it's be the cheerleading coach, even though I've never been a cheerleader, as I said earlier, or to cleaning a bathroom or playing a game. I'm always willing to do whatever it is, and that is really my core value as a human being. And I love this district. I owe this district my success as a human being. I have my doctorate from Michigan State, and that wouldn't be possible without the education that I received here in Wild Lake Schools. And I'm watching my own children flourish because of what they've experienced here as well. And I want to make sure that we have ensured that for every kid that comes up behind us, because they deserve that as well.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Okay, we're going to call us back to order, and our next candidate interview is with Mr. Michael Smith. So please feel free. Hot seat? Say, welcome, and thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Say, I'm going to start with the questions.
Sure.
It says, why do you want to be appointed to the school board? And if selected, what do you hope to accomplish while serving?
Sure. First, of course, I want to thank you for this opportunity. It's wonderful to be back in this building after so many years. I want to bring forth some information about that. So when I look at this, when I was serving on that side almost 12 years ago, here, my daughter is coming up on 12, and I'm looking at that, and I'm seeing my children grow. I currently have a fourth grader and a sixth grader in the school system. It's crazy how much I've grown in this amount of time. And I kind of really brought back that internal drive to want to be on this side again, to help out. I've been kind of helping locally at, my son goes to Dublin, my daughter goes to CHS, so kind of helping on some of those aspects. I've been seeing to kind of like really work for them and work for the future of all the students and educators in this district again. I was really passionate about it that long ago, and it's never gone away. It's just kind of been families taking precedent now that they're a little older. Kind of living up to the thing that if you want to see change, you create change, you make change, you be a part of it. And I teach that to my children. I want to be a part of that. I might not have all the answers, of course, but I will always put the students in their best interests first at the heart for all of my decisions that I make. They're, you know, as we look at it, we have some future doctors, attorneys, artists, musicians, teachers, everything like that. So you really have to take that into account, and that's why I want to be a part of that, be a part of that change that we have. We have a lot of decisions to make over the next future. So we have a new superintendent. After the May 7th bond election, we're going to have a lot of decisions to make, and I'd love to be a part of that. I was honored, like I said, to be elected in 2010 and kind of being part of that. I kind of see us going through a similar situation that we went to, that I was a part of with redistricting then, where there was a lot of changes that were on the horizon. And I would really love to be on this side again, kind of show my voice, be a part of the district, kind of the northern part in White Lake area, so it'd be nice to have that voice from up there on this side of the table again.
Thank you. What makes you a valuable representative of the district as a school board member? What do you think you bring to the district?
Sure. I'm a lifelong resident of White Lake Township. Of course, minor the time that I was at Grand Valley during my undergrad. I'm married with two children. I'm currently employed in the public sector. I'm coming up on my 20-year anniversary in the public service now. I've had numerous experience from being a city manager, village administrator. I've worked for the city of Clauston, for Oakland County, for Berkeley, for Wolverine Lake for a short time. Currently, I'm the city clerk. I'm a certified municipal clerk for the city of Northville. So I've been working, I've been elected, non-elected, I've been working with them for all of my career. Through my experience as a public servant, I've been fortunate, of course, to work with the following, with elected officials passing multimillion-dollar budgets, working in risk management, oversight of infrastructure improvements, being on the decision-making with human resources, hiring and firing, you know, all that, all those processes that come with that. I know what it takes to work with federal, local, state elected officials and try and get, you know, grant opportunities that are out there, try and get the funding. I know that's a question that'll come up later, but of course, getting enough school funding that we have. I know having those connections and that within the elected officials is important, and I have that experience for all my years, working with all the, within the district and being access here. I'm an avid volunteer for the elementary, proud parent, helping out with the Dublin PTA. Recently, I was a member of the PTA. There was a special subcommittee, their structured spending committee, where we kind of worked with some ideas, try and bring, we had some money there at Dublin after we had a brand-new school, so we're trying to figure out some ways. So it was nice. That was kind of got my foot, my feet wet again, to kind of get involved with the local PTA. Also, I know, pointing at someone who has 20 years of experience, I've been on that side of, I know Robert Rules, I know parliamentary procedure, you know, I've been a city clerk, I've, like I said, for almost 15 years now. So I understand how, what it takes to be an elected official and then a non-elected official as well. And I think I could bring my experience and the aspect of my ideas that I have, again, being a past school board member, but also being currently a city clerk and working with local governments, I think I could be an asset to this board.
Thank you. What do you see as a board member's role in the day-to-day operations and decisions in the district? Can you explain to us what you would consider to be the most important duties of a board member?
Sure. I wanted to, I actually pulled up the MASB. I wanted to see what they were stating, because we all know, you know, so I looked at it, just kind of a quick paraphrase. So the primary function of the Board of Education is to oversee the education of students in the community. That's first and foremost. So what do school board members do? You govern the district's work at the highest level, which includes establishing policies and procedures, and overseeing the superintendent's performance. You adopt and enforce all necessary rules for management and governance. And of course, the biggest one is that you adopt a budget. Those are your main key aspects. What school members do not do, that I think oftentimes, sometimes we don't always know, is you do not manage the day-to-day. That's upon the superintendent. You do not oversee district communications to parents and students. No single board member has any power. You, as a collective, work together. You work as a voice. You can vote 5-2, 7-0, whatever it is, but you're the voice in totality there. So I think it's important to know that, because many of us on the opposite side don't always understand what a school board member, even as I'm going around talking to my neighbors, they're always like, what is it? What do you do? And so I think it's important to do that, have that communication out there, have that impact that you have in your neighborhoods to determine, because you're determining contracts for staff and consultants, you're dealing with contract negotiations with teachers and unions. And I think it's really, you know, overseeing school property, all these different aspects of what your job is, is amazing that you're volunteering this time. It's impressive that how much time is dedicated to do all these things. And I think with those things in mind, the main duty is that I feel are to establish goals and policies, of course, that's the one, direction for operations, to the cabinet, to the superintendent, and to have really sensible oversight and budget presentation and preparation, so that you know that we're good stewards of the tax dollars and especially the bond money that's coming in. So I want to make sure that we're that voice there, that we're helping out and that we're getting it out to the community. To keep in mind, all the decisions that we make are affecting so many in this district. We're such a large district, and we kind of reach out to so many different communities, so it's really important to have that. And we need to keep up with the modern practices and make sure that our teachers are given the right tools. You know, I look at in my own government, when we always talk about, do they have the right tools in their toolkit? Do they have enough professional development? They have all the things to the modern practices that we need to be. So you, as a school board, that you're making those decisions that are going to really benefit those teachers, and that's what you need to keep key as we move forward to create a safe and successful school district.
Thank you. How would you balance community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff considerations, and your personal views and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issues?
Sure. When I think about balance, I think about one thing ahead of all things, and that is to advocate for all students. And working in concert, of course, with staff and administration to implement positive and needed policies. We, as a district, of course, have a lot on the horizon that's coming forward with potential decisions. I've heard Plant Moran and the other studies that have come through. Like I said, I've been through those in the past. And, you know, we have a lot of those different insights and experiences that we're going to bring to the board. And I know that we, of course, cannot please everyone, but what you're doing is you're putting the students, that's your main decision-making. What is going to, what is the benefit for all students? That is your goal as a board, is to make sure that you're making decisions that are impacting the students positively moving forward, that you might have some of your opinions coming in, and they might, like I said, you might have a vote of 7-0, you might 5-2, 4-3, whatever it is. But it's to have respect for each other, respect for the residents, the parents, the students, the educators, in any decision that you're making to be successful. Of course, one of the main lessons that I've always had in all of my experiences is having stakeholder, like where you have interactions, a lot of times with public hearings, whatever it is, if something major is coming on. I remember going around, like I said, from, you know, a decade ago, going around to the schools and actually talking, talking about plans, communicating what's going on. I think that's the biggest thing now, as a parent, I'm always like, where's the communication? So you want to make sure that it's there, and I think that's on, that's best on the school board, is to really get out there and be that voice of the district. And I think that's important, because we have some, you know, as we know, simple votes on big issues are not always simple. So it takes tact, empathy, and careful thoughtful process to make those decisions. And I will never waver from being a champion of, for all students. That's any decision I make, you know, you could have personal opinions on things, but I think you kind of vet it out. You go through those decision-making processes. You work collectively. You listen to other board members, other stakeholders, the administration, and you come to kind of realization what is going to benefit the entire district. I believe how I fit into this board when I vote on issues is I will always maintain attainable expectations for all student achievement. I think that's the most important thing. I will listen and work with community, of course, the parents, staff, leaders, administrators. I will spend time on things that matter, like student achievement. I won't micromanage the administration and let them do their job. That's why you hire them, but really focus on student achievement and not wasting your time on those things. I will work to maintain collaboration. I think that's important. And communication, like I said, across all vast areas of communication that we have out there. And I think the biggest thing that we all learned is that, you know, data drives decisions. I think that's the biggest thing, is that if you have data, you have metrics that you can measure, you can see if things are working, if programs aren't. Like I said, in my side of the government, we're not going to keep on doing something if it's not working. So we want to work through those solutions and kind of come up with some ideas and make sure that we're leading with integrity. I think every decision I make, it's important to lead with integrity and know that you can walk away and you made the best decision. Like I said, you can't please everyone, but you're trying to please the greater good when you make these decisions. I will tend to any team development. I remember back then, I tried to start to do the MASB training, anything that you can get out there for yourself, and that's the biggest thing. Even as a board, we'd have, I remember having retreats. That's so key to that. So collectively, you work together. You're going to have difference of opinions. You have different backgrounds. We understand that. But how can you collectively come together to make the best decision for the district? I think that's key when you're making any type of votes on any issues.
Thank you. What do you believe are the top issues facing our school district and why?
Sure. In no particular order, but of course, school funding. Really want to push to advocate our legislators to make sure that we have proper per pupil funding. Enrollment and retention of students and staff. I really want to focus I really want to focus on, you know, you think about, I always look at attaining and then attracting and retaining. So you want to make sure they have top-notch educators. But again, you want to make sure we have equitable pay and balance of life that we have out there. I see some of the teachers, you know, coming out of post-COVID as a parent with the little ones out there. You saw how much was going through, so I think really focusing on that, make sure that our teachers are paid well, that this district is attracting really top-notch educators, I think is key, and then keeping them here. Really maintaining that balance of having, you know, really, if they're performing well, that's good. You know, we want to really accept and get after that. And then future strategic planning. Want to have purposeful allocation of buildings and, you know, with demographic shifts. I know in my area, it's been, you know, a lot of new subdivisions are being built, but we're looking at the demographics of people aren't having kids anymore, so we're kind of looking at, or maybe just one, or things like that. I know Wixom is kind of getting a bigger population, so it's really, it goes back to that data. And then, of course, academics and well-being. Make sure we have programs in place for IEPs, 504s, and any type of achievement to really help those kids that, as we saw, some of them might have slipped through the cracks during the COVID years. And really make sure that we have programs in place that are really helping all the kids out there. Of course, safety and security. Make sure our schools are safe and with proper procedures in place, and make sure that it's communicated to all the parents, that we know all the plans. We need to talk about, you know, equity and equality, serving all of our students. And make sure, again, like we are attracting the best teachers out there. We continue to have to evaluate all these years, as we're seeing, so much has changed. I know that, you know, a lot of kids, we're coming into the season, my wife is a, is a mental health therapist, working with another school up in Oxford, and we always talk about that, like what is it? You know, do we have enough mental health therapists? Do we have counselors? Do we have social workers on site? Because we're going to see some of these kids start to come into the district now, who maybe have had been sheltered lives because of the COVID years. So it's really, as we're seeing those things, we're going to see a dynamic shift that's going on, and kind of some of the needs that we're going to see is going to kind of shift. So we have to kind of respond to that and really engage with them. And then we need to work together to tackle these issues, and of course, always maintain transparency and provide opportunities for growth and progress. So that's where I believe.
I'm grabbing some water if you want to. All right, here we go, my two-parter.
Okay.
How do you approach making a decision where there is no clear right answer, and anyone's answer or action will not satisfy all constituents? Please tell us about a time when this happened and how you handled it.
Sure. You know, I can go back to all my 20 years now of working in the public sector. I think the biggest thing with, like I said, with any important decision, anything that you're making is that people want to be heard, so you listen to all the data, all the people. You know, I pride myself on approaching it with an open ear, an open eye, open heart, that you listen to that, you get that different, that background, you understand that services and residents and students desire and expect, you kind of think about that, like what is, what is their expectation? So you want to make sure that we're living up to our goals through these decisions. And you know that we all come from different backgrounds, so we're allowed to have our own opinions, but we know that, you know, my personal traits in making a decision is I'm always going to lead with empathy, with inquiry, I love asking questions. Sometimes I just love sitting back and just listening. I think that's just part of the process, it might not be immediate, but I think it's really going through that with having a selflessness approach, you know, keeping my advocacy there, ethics and integrity in any decision I make. These are traits that have helped me over the years. You know, I've made tough decisions that, you know, you look at, I've had to fire people that were underperforming. I've had to change, you know, reorganize departments, whatever it is that has come up. And it always hasn't been the best situation for that, of course, that individual, or whatever it was, but in the grand scheme of things, it had to be done. And I think when you look at that, when I, when I had to handle those situations, you know, you kind of question it, but you have to keep in mind what is for the greater good. And the same thing here, I remember when I was on that side and we had to vote to close schools. I think that was a very tough decision, but we did decide to close too. So I, you know, that was a long, long process to get there. And I think that's important, is if it's a really long issue, you really have to delve deep into it and really, it can't be a quick, you know, off-the-cuff response. So, and many of my roles have had to do that, but I think the biggest thing is, you know, active listening, really, really listen to the public, listen to your administration, listen to your fellow board members, really get all the input before you make those decisions. And of course, our aim is to give back to the future of this district. So any decision that we're making, again, you have to keep that in mind. You might go, go home and say, man, you know, I might have lost this little battle, but, you know, in the end, you're going to win, you know, whatever it is. So I think that's our primary function, is to oversee the education of the students. So any decision there, that's there, that's what you have to focus on.
Final question.
Sure.
Board member's service is a serious commitment and can be both rewarding and challenging. Tell us with examples why you are committed to the Wild Lake Schools.
Sure. My, my history runs, runs deep here. I'm a proud graduate of the school district. I went to Dublin, I went to CHS, I went to Wild Lake Central before we even had Northern. I graduated in 99. I could have moved to another district. You know, I worked down in the southeast quadrant in Oakland County, worked Berkeley, Clauston. I could have moved down there, but I wanted to stay here and, you know, I had a great experience. I wanted to make my roots here. We decided to establish this here. I, like I said, I, as a fellow graduate, I wanted to give back, and so in 2010, I ran. I won, and I was elected to it, and I served until my daughter was born. And then I realized that, you know, my daughter was six months old, and I was like, that's more important right now for, in the best interest of the district, I need to be with my own family. And now here I am, realize, looking at, as I see a fourth grader and a sixth grader in my life, how important it is as a parent now to give back again and to see that they're older. My daughter would be here right now if she wasn't at volleyball, because she loves this type of thing. She's been watching me over the years, be involved, and she, I think someday she'll be president, so. I think here I am, rising to the challenge, living up to my own goal in life, which is making a difference in the larger community. I really want to see that. You can see me around during the week and the weekend. I'm at flag football, I was at Northern this weekend in the sun, way too hot on Sunday. I'm a coach and a mentor to the kids, to my son and to some others that are on the team. I help with, insist with my daughter's volleyball through the Wild Lakes bikers. We just finished our tournament at Central this past weekend, too. I've been a coach for the Lakes Area baseball, so I, you know, for the last couple of years as well. I've worked with the Dublin PTA, volunteer, volunteer my time at the elementary school whenever I can. I love to chaperone, I love that we can go out and do events again, having back, that's amazing. I've been able to go on wonderful trips with my son. I've been able to do a part of that. I even remember, I worked with Mr. Chatfield before the Dublin school was torn down. I helped repaint the Dublin sign, because I want, I cared about that. That was the sign that I always remember growing up, the white sign. So I make sure, I cut it down and I, it's stored now, but I'm just, I really want to give back. I love going to musicals, art shows, voluntary events, whatever it is, just respectively. And I would hope it's that personal thing that in 2030 and 2032 respectively, that I could watch my own children walk across the stage and, you know, give them a hug on the stage if I was, as a board member. So I know what this district can provide, and I'm thankful for my own experience being a graduate, and, which I looked back, and it was actually during Mr. Siegler's, I think, first term. So congrats on longevity and dedication, because I think you actually signed my diploma. So I look forward to being a part of the changes ahead, and I do thank you for this, for this evening, this opportunity.
Thank you very, very much. Okay.
I think we're all set?
Yep.
Then get back to CHS, it's Parents Against Kids. Thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you. Okay, we can decide, we can take a break, or our other two candidates are present. If we want to push forward, we can push forward? Yep, you sure may. Yep, you sure may. Yep. Yep, don't, feel free. And now we will move forward. Mr. Lippett? Good evening. Say, Mr. Ron Lippett, welcome and thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Everybody ready? Okay. Why do you want to be appointed to the school board? And if selected, what do you hope to accomplish while serving?
Yeah, first, allow me to express my appreciation to the board, Dr. Bernia, all those who are part of the process. I think I speak for all the candidates. It is an absolute honor and a privilege to be considered for the appointment tonight. I recognize the effort, as I think we said earlier, sometimes thankless, that each of you have put into your responsibilities to our community. So allow me to say thank you for your hard work, your dedication, and the opportunity to sit with you tonight. My wife and I have moved, moved to this community 20 years ago, seeking a combination of factors. Most notably, it's access to a highly-ranked public school system. We chose our neighborhood in Commerce specifically because of its connection to Commerce Elementary, Clifford Smart, and Wild Lake Northern. And that decision was rewarded with an absolutely exceptional academic experience for all three of our girls, including our youngest, who is a sophomore today at Wild Lake Northern. My primary interest in being appointed to the school board is to equip our district with the people, the process, and the tools that it will need to fulfill our promise to the community, that of an elite, high-performing public school system, like my family experienced. I understand clearly that being a board member is not easy. There is a wide array of responsibilities around budgets and curriculums and facilities. We'll get to that in, I think, a later question. Perhaps most importantly, the selection and evaluation of our next superintendent. For me, I expect my contribution to the board to be through a pragmatic, well-researched and thoughtful set of decisions across all of the board's responsibilities, especially those which lead to transparency and accountability towards the district's short and long-term goals.
Thank you. What makes you a valuable representative of the district as a school board member? What do you think you bring to the district?
Sure. I come to you this evening with a consulting operational background. I lead teams that demand exceptional, exceptional, measurable results. In my case, through the timely acquisition of talent. My responsibilities require the creation of both tactical and strategic goals, which align to a long-term vision, something I might feel somewhat familiar to our friends here on the board. And I've gotten to understand that the expectations of our board are similar. Achieving results through teamwork has been crucial to my own success. I see many similarities with my background to some of the challenges the board faces. You are a passionate team. I, and so I believe that listening, intelligent, questioning, and most importantly, respect, will always lead to amazing results. Second, as some of you know, I am an enthusiastic advocate of our schools, and I'm eager to engage our community in this capacity. Having a positive, open mind and being responsive to ideas and feedback often lead to stellar outcomes. Most people who know me know I tend to be a pragmatist, particularly when it comes to lively debate. I approach issues usually with a calm, measured manner, which has served me well in my career. And I believe it'll be useful with my colleagues on the board if I was so chosen. Lastly, for what it's worth, I have thick skin. I have a healthy sense of humor, which is probably going to be useful in the role. I believe I have the right natural demeanor, and will make the district proud in how I represent us to the students, the parents, and our wider community.
Thank you. What do you see as a board member's role in the day-to-day operations and decisions in the district? Can you explain to us what you consider to be the most important duties of a board member?
Yeah. I recognize the board has a variety of responsibilities. Of course, chief among these is the hiring and evaluation of our superintendent. I think this is a wonderful segue for me to express our thanks and appreciation for Dr. Bernia and his efforts in the district. I know I speak, sir, for a lot of people in the community when I say you will be missed. Beyond hiring our superintendent, the board has a range of responsibilities, some of which have been shared already. Establishing long and short-term goals, I think is going to be critical. These in turn drive measurable outcomes. In partnership with the superintendent, the board develops and establishes policy for the district and is expected to understand its impact. The budget, obviously, is a core function to the board, reviewing, adjusting, implementing a budget which aligns to the goals of the district, that will be critical. The board also has responsibilities with respect to staffing, obviously, in creating the policies which govern salaries, contract terms, benefits, leave, professional development, evaluations, and so on. And with respect to facilities, logistics, the board works to determine need and to assess and agree on varying strategies to accommodate a changing footprint. I would lastly say that each member of the board, yourselves included, and perhaps myself, you are an ambassador to the community. Our strength and cohesiveness as a board must be projected out to the district each day. Each day is an opportunity to remind our community that Wild Lake Schools is, again, an elite public school system in great hands, with a vision for how our children will thrive under our leadership.
Thank you. How would you balance community, community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff considerations, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on an issue?
Yeah. So all of these matters are obviously critical. As a prospective board member, I recognize fully the awesome responsibility to represent our community through careful evaluation, consensus building, direct questions, and of course, active listening, which will be necessary to arrive at a well-considered vote. The balance comes through preparation and processing of all those evaluations. I don't consider necessarily one factor more important than the other, but I will say that the lack of any of those items effectiveness will undo much of our great work. Regarding personal values, I think it's important I address this point separately. Each of us has a personal value system which guides our actions. I am certainly no different in that respect. And while my own value system helps to frame my own point of view, I expect to arrive at conclusions through engagement, teamwork, and whenever possible, the data to drive decisions which make sense for our kids. Put simply, I have no interest in interjecting my own moral compass into the district deliberations. Commit to each of you here that I will do what's right for our kids in the district based on research, deliberation, teamwork, and of course, data.
Thank you. What do you believe are the top issues facing our school district and why?
Yeah. So I could easily spend all of my allotted time on this discussion point alone. I'll skip the most obvious one regarding Dr. Bernia's impending departure and replacement. But given our time, I've selected for myself five issues, which I consider to be perilous for the district and frankly, nationally. And here they are, in no particular order, but I'll start with number one, and that is a national teacher shortage. Obviously, this is a huge topic with a number of issues that are to be examined by our board. Let me just reinforce that our teachers remain the lifeblood of our district. Recruiting, retaining, and empowering our teachers must be a requirement of the board. Number two is declining enrollment. I can't think of a more divisive issue than the impact of changing enrollment. The very notion of school closures, redrawn districting, busing, allocation of assets. This sits at the core of our community's concern, and frankly, I don't blame them. So that would be my number two. And my number three, of course, is budget. We just passed our bond, congratulations to those who were in support of it. But paired along with enrollment, the incredibly thin margins with which the district must achieve its goals will be daunting, to say the least, will require strength in planning and strategy and frankly, conviction to make tough choices, which will serve our district. Number four are evolving academic requirements. If you know me, you know I've spoken in public about the opportunities in strengthening STEM performance in Wild Lake Schools. But a recent report by the NAEA, the National Assessment of Education Progress, showed the biggest drop in math performance since their testing began in 1990. There is clearly work to be done from our district and for many districts around Detroit and Michigan as a whole. Graduating district kids with competitive skills should sit at the top of the board's priorities, especially the idea of competitive skills. And lastly, I'll just mention divisive partisan politics. There are many ways to cut this. I've thought about this a lot. I definitely knew I wanted to mention it, but I wanted to talk about one specific area that I'm particularly sensitive to, and that is losing, losing talented assets because of the stress involved with navigating today's political climate. That's something we cannot allow in our system. The greatness of our district- The greatness of our district continues to lie in our teachers, our administrators, our staff, our students, the families we support. We cannot afford to lose any of them needlessly on this cause. Thank you. Yes, please. Thank you.
One of my personal goals is making sure I'm drinking more water. All right, here's my two-parter. How do you approach making a decision where there's no clear right answer, and anyone's answer or action will not satisfy all constituents? Please tell us about a time when this happened and how you handled it.
Yeah. So this is a topic I instantly recognize as critical to the role. It's also one I happen to deal with in my professional career fairly regularly, so let me just say this. I understand fully the decisions will occasionally be met with scorn, if not outright anger, from those who potentially don't agree. I also know the correctness, if that's a word, of our actions will sometimes be challenged. But as I've said previously, with every vote, I will rely on preparation, research, and hopefully, data, which will compel me to vote in a certain direction. As an example, I have the privilege of sitting as an officer for our homeowners association. And if you've ever sat on a homeowners association, you'd understand how this can involve a wide array of personalities and passions. This is not an easy job. So our board, we recognized a future capital expense which required proposing, mind you, just proposing, changes to dues structure. So as the question might indicate, a lack of satisfaction was voiced from some of our constituents. Rage might be another way to phrase it. The issue was handled carefully through a cost-risk analysis. There was a period of question and answers. There was ultimately a report which was produced and a board verdict on why I and the other board members decided to vote a certain way. And this satisfied most people, but I think this is the most important point. There remained many who were still opposed to the decision. And I think this is a very important point to point out about service on any board. We make the best decisions we can, given the information we have, when we have it, and how that fits into our long-term planning. I suspect this experience will be directly valuable to any time I might spend on any board, and frankly, directly with the board that we're talking to today.
Thank you. Your final question?
Yes.
Board member service is a serious commitment and can be both rewarding and challenging. Tell us with examples why you are committed to Wald Lake Schools.
Yeah. I recognize fully the commitment I'm making in being considered for the board. I'm also aware of the cost, both personally and professionally. It's likely to exact a toll on me and potentially those around me. I recognize all of this. I am at a time in my life where I feel like I can be most valuable to my community, where I have the most to offer in terms of my knowledge, my experience, where I can truly have a positive impact on those who rely on our district to produce high-achieving kids. Put simply, I'd like to give back to our district in a meaningful way, just as my family benefited meaningfully from our 20 years in the Wald Lake District. My own strength with teams, teams that achieve high results, it gives me confidence in the impact that is yet to come through my service on the board. My operational background with budgets and strategy and goal-setting, they prepare me for these challenges that I would be expecting through the appointment. Lastly, I have an open mind, and I have an authentic interest in learning from those of you who can accelerate my growth on the board and help me to understand issues from all perspectives. This community is my community, and whether I'm on the board or not, I see an elite public school system as an anchor to our community. Serving on the board gives me that opportunity to support this next generation of kids, to empower them to reach their potential, to collaborate with parents, staff, and the wider community we serve, so that we can realize our expectation of every child every day. Please allow me once again to say thank you for your time tonight, regardless of the outcome. I have immense respect for what each of you do, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Say, welcome, Mrs. Suzie Crafton. Thank you.
Hi there.
Hi. Why do you want to be appointed to the school board? And if selected, what do you hope to accomplish while serving?
Well, I've had the privilege of sitting in this seat once before, in the hot seat, as we were calling it. I saw appointment back in 2018, 19-ish, when Mrs. Kaplan was appointed. I've been, I also ran for election in November of '22, and I have been a steady force in the district, expressing my interest in serving on this board. I have two decades in the education field, mostly in school finance and driving education reform efforts. And literally, my first job in education reform in 2004 was in school board governance, where I had the privilege of working with 16 urban school district superintendent teams to drive student learning outcomes and improvements. Twelve of those 16 districts ended up winning the Broad Prize, which at that time was the national prize for student learning outcome improvements. I grew up here. I'm a proud Wald Lake Western alumni, went to Maple Elementary and, back then, Wald Lake Junior High. I moved to Houston after I finished my master's at Michigan State and planned to raise my children in Houston. We were looking for a high school, and my oldest, I was not pleased with our high school options in Houston. And I reflected on my high school and the beautiful experience I had at Wald Lake Western, and I knew it was time to bring my family home. We moved back in 2018, and I pretty immediately saw appointment, since I have the knowledge and skills to serve with you all on the board, and was told to get more involved in the district. And so that's what I've been doing since. I'll bring that part up again later. Thanks.
Good evening. What makes you a valuable representative of the district as a school board member? What do you think you bring to the district?
I think, right now, the value that I bring most importantly is steady, stable leadership. We are at a point in time, thank you, Dr. Bernia, for your leadership. I so wished to be able to be part of the team that governs this district alongside you, but I know you'll do beautiful things in Warren. But we've got a lot of stuff we need to get done here. Thank goodness the bond passed, but we've got a lot of stuff we've got to work on. And I believe I'm a very quick study, given that I have been working in school board governance for 20 years. I literally spend most of my day working on school finance issues, and I've actually been complimented that I actually can make the nuance of school finance understandable to an average person. That is not an easy thing to do. And so I think helping the community understand the complicated nuances of the decisions that this board is going to be facing is something that I have a talent in. Lastly, I understand competitive discretionary grants, having raised almost a half a billion dollars in public education funding. And so while that would not be my job, because that is a school district management responsibility, I certainly understand the landscape and would love to see Wald Lake become a destination district with some, that can draw talent and families, more on destination districts down the road.
Thank you. What do you see as a board member's role in the day-to-day operations and decisions in the district? Can you explain to us what you consider to be the most important duties of a board member?
First and foremost, the board is a team. And active listening, understanding folks' perspective, listening both to community, family, parents, educators, students, and then working together. What we do as a united board is support, select, support, and hold accountable a superintendent who then manages the district. The board does not have a role in the day-to-day operations of the district. Instead, they offer families or community members who have concern how to get back into the management system to get their concerns or needs addressed. The other most important thing to me is that our board, Wald Lake is a beautiful place, and I think we could find common ground in our core beliefs and commitments as a district, and then build a theory of change alongside our superintendent that would guide our policy decisions. This was the framework we used in my school board consultancy governance program 20 years ago, and it has been proven to work. If we can find an alignment of our core beliefs and commitments as a board through listening to the community, define a theory of change for how we're going to prepare our kids for their futures, and then set policy that aligns to that, beautiful things can happen.
How would you balance community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff considerations, and your own personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on an
The first point I'll make is that all of those pieces are what make our ecosystem important. We are here for students. Students are going to benefit from our policies, or they are not. And that is a very daunting responsibility. It is informed, then, our decisions are then informed by community voice, educators, state and federal law, of course. But we need to put students at the center of every decision we make. And I believe that I have lived that value in very difficult leadership positions in my lifetime in education. And I also believe that I model putting students first in my day-to-day interactions in the I also brought up the nuance of education, and I want to just point out that I really value transparency. But transparency actually means communicating effectively with the people you're trying to communicate with. And when we sometimes keep it at a very high level, it's hard for community members and parents to understand the hard seats that you sit in and the hard decisions that have to be made. So I would love to actively listen and then help educate on this nuance so that we can try to find some common ground, because I feel like, at the end of the day, this community is united. It is not, it does not need to be divided.
Thank you. So what do you believe are the top issues facing our school district and why?
So the easy first answer is declining enrollment. However, I think there's a real opportunity there to reframe that declining enrollment challenge to an opportunity for us to become a destination district, where talent, our educators and our administrators, want to be here, they want to come here first, and then they want to stay here. If we get that right, while also implementing a program that has skills designed for the future workforce that we don't know what it's going to look like yet because of the way that technology is evolving, if we can start to build programs that embrace what the future could look like, we just might be able to start drawing families here again. We all know it's a beautiful community, and everyone wants to stay here. I believe we could build a school district where families want to come and stay. So when I say destination district, that's what I mean. I don't think it's that far from what Mr. Lipit was talking about when he brought up elite district. But I believe that we have the ability and the ability to draw and really make something special here. So declining enrollment actually is destination district opportunity. Obviously, related to that is the tough choices we're going to have to make around implementing the facilities recommendations that are made possible because of the bond. I personally see a need to strengthen our special education services and would like to understand better what opportunities there are for us to improve there. And related to that, I have a deep concern that it's really hard to be a young person today. It's harder than it was when I was a kid, and it wasn't easy then. And so I think they need extra supports. I don't know, I don't want to, mental health, to me, is a, that almost oversimplifies the problem, and bullying is the output of what I'm talking about. But we really need to put our kids' safety and mental health and supportive systems to just be a kid today in place. I at least brought my own, right? In like a nice big container?
It's partially gone, too. So that's good. All right. Here's my two-parter for you. How do you approach making a decision where there is no clear right answer, and anyone's answer or action will not satisfy all constituents? Please tell us about a time when this happened and how you handled it.
First, I have been told that I have a superpower for pattern recognition. Because I've been in the education world for 20 years, very little surprises me. I have seen a lot of challenges and how they play out. Unfortunately, a lot of the time, I've learned what not to do when watching systems evolve and change. But I would certainly ground myself in data and in embracing that pattern recognition. Let's not make the mistakes that other areas or districts have made before. Second, I approach pretty much all decisions, much to the chagrin of some of the people who work with me in decision-making, looking for options that make less of a constituent losing. So instead of looking, creating scenarios that are a zero-sum, where there is a winner and a loser, a lot of the time, if you can step back and look at the bigger picture, you can find opportunities to lessen the losers, the amount of losers. That happens through active listening and also through embracing the nuance to try and find, do the homework to find out where the root cause of what you're trying to solve for is. Lastly, I ground all of my decision-making in either the mission of the organization or the purpose of the policy that we're trying to grapple with, which takes me to my example. I have the privilege of serving on the elected board of Michigan PTA, and I also serve on that advocacy committee. Michigan PTA is invited regularly to sign on or consider supporting bills and other legislation in the House and Senate. legislation in the House and Senate. And our procedure is that it votes in committee, advocacy committee, and if it votes out of advocacy committee, it goes to the board of directors for a discussion and action. So the advocacy committee is not actually saying, "We support this or we don't." It's actually saying, "This is in the purview of our mission, and we should take it to the board for discussion." So we were approached a little while ago to support a four-bill package. And two, first in advocacy committee, two bills were clearly in line with the mission. Two bills were questionable. Suzie personally believed that they were great for kids. But that's not my job at the moment. My job is to evaluate if they're in support of the mission. We debated and debated and debated in advocacy committee, and we could not find a unanimous approach. So we decided, since we were divided, we would take it out of committee for full board discussion. We had full board discussion. It also was heated and very divided on the same issue, two bills clear, two bills questionable. We ended up voting to not support. It was tough, because if we had had the opportunity, we could have written a letter that said, "We support these two bills," and left the other two bills aside. But that wasn't the opportunity for this bill package. I'm proud that we grappled with it, and I'm proud that we landed at staying in alignment with our mission.
Last question. Board member's service is a serious commitment. It can be both rewarding and challenging. Tell us with examples why you're committed to Wald Lake Schools.
Well, first, this is the perfect time to thank you all for your service. I come into this with eyes wide open, that this is a very serious commitment, and it is quite thankless. So hear me, please, when I say, "Thank you for your service." There's that old adage, "If you want something done, ask the busiest person you know." I had the privilege, when I sought appointments a few years back, of being told, "You should get a little bit more involved in the district." So since then, I've been involved in the elementary, middle, and high school PTAs. I served on the PTSA council next to Mrs. Levin. I am elected member of the Michigan PTA. I've been serving on the FFE board for years alongside Mr. Siegler. And I'm currently the treasurer of the FFE board. Above and beyond that, though, I get the privilege of developing some relationships with parents and families, because I'm really involved in my kids' life. So I've been a wrestling mom, I've been a musical theater mom. You can find me right now at Wald Lake Western cleaning out the choir uniform loft, because it needs to be cleaned out before the demolition happens. I am all-in for Wald Lake Schools and have been since, at least I was class president in 1994. So it's been a long time. I also want to take this time to point out that I did run for election in November of '22. That was a significant time commitment, and I was very serious about that campaign. I was able to secure 10,774 votes, and I did earn a number of endorsements, including the Educator Association endorsement. So I'm here to serve if you shall have me. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a 10-minute recess to be back at 7:55.
I'm like, "Okay, well, she's definitely going to be like, "Oh, he's probably going
Every time I say one of them, "How much can I pay?" "Can I have that?" I've got an idea. I always say that. And then when I look, it's like, "I don't have any money." And he's just like, "At my loss." I'm like, "Oh, God, you don't know each other." I did tell him during this, we found out we're still out. I was like, "Adrian." He was just like, "Oh, my God."
And then my other friends have worked out.
And then my other friends have worked out.
You look very thirsty with all the water. They did. That's, the times there are changing.
Okay, we're going to begin again. Say, we're going to talk about our board candidate vacancy process. Dr. Brugge.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So at this juncture, the board has to decide. What you've done is that the board, we posted the information for the public, we collected applications. All board members received applications and full packets. And then, some of you were nice enough to have me over to your home so you could get your packet. And then, and then from there, the board, the board appointed a subcommittee to identify and build that top tier of candidates. So everyone's had the opportunity to review all the paperwork, and a top tier of candidates was built for you. So now the question to the board is, are you satisfied with having just interviewed that top tier of candidates that was identified? If so, you can begin the process to deliberate, or if not, we can schedule further interviews. So that's really the question for the board and for you all to discuss at this time.
Dr. Siegler.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody that applied for the board, and thank you for your commitment and dedication to the Wald Lake Community School Board, School Board and to the school district. I would also like to thank the committee for narrowing down the process and bringing us the candidates for the interview. I am in favor of closing the interview process at this time.
Support. Yep. Let's make the motion.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education close the interview process for the board vacancy.
I, me, I'm guilty.
Is it in there, any discussion?
I agree. Mrs. Casagrande.
Yes.
Mrs. Fernandez.
Yes.
Mrs. Levin.
Yes.
Mr. Siegler.
Yes.
Ms. Teist.
Yes.
And Mrs. Kaplan.
At this point, we will move forward, and this is the time that is set aside for your discussion and deliberation. And so I will just kind of scooch back now. Let you all talk to each other.
Any of you want to start?
Thank you. I enjoyed hearing from everybody tonight. You certainly get a different perspective on the candidates when they're here answering the questions in a little bit more depth than the application. It was enlightening to hear more from people that I knew a little bit, and to learn more about those people, and then to meet new people. So thank you all for the time that you put in. It is, I'm sure, nerve-wracking to try to go about securing a seat on the board this way, as nerve-wracking as it is to go through an election. So kudos to you for taking that opportunity. I will pass it off to the next person to comment a little bit more.
I'll talk. So to take it, kind of maybe that next step from Mrs. Levin, I was impressed. I actually said to Ms. Teist over here that I think any of the candidates who interviewed today could do the job. And I have been in this position appointing before, more than once, and it hasn't always been that way. So I too am really impressed that people want to come out and do this job, and I do think that with some thoughtful consideration, that we can, you know, make a decision. And I don't know that there will be a bad decision. I think there's very good candidates here. I will make... I will make a couple of comments from what I am looking for. So we have a little sheet here that says we're looking for things like understands the board role in governance. We have experience in the district volunteering, advocacy, represents the entire community, data driven, et cetera. And so some of the things that I appreciated is I thought that one of the things we do as a board is we look at qualitative and quantitative data. And we ask questions, a lot of questions. We may ask them at the table. We may ask them before we get to the table. And sometimes people say, well, gosh, if you have a 7-0 vote, did you do your job? And I'm like, well, actually, yes, because we asked so many questions, we got there, right? So I was impressed. I thought that three out of the four candidates brought data forward. And those three candidates, I thought, brought data forward at the forefront were Mr. Smith, Mr. Lippett, and Ms. Crafton. I also was impressed that we had some education background. The education background that I saw was from Mrs. Zellner and Ms. Crafton. I also started looking at, well, who have I seen and who do I know? Well, I've worked with Mr. Smith before here on the board, so I have that background. I also have seen some of these folks at meetings. I think the person I've seen most in our meetings lately has been Mr. Lippett. Does that matter? I don't know. Just things to think about. I also looked at advocacy for public education. So I saw that strongest with Mr. Smith and Ms. Crafton. And then again, I kind of looked at some intangibles. One of the things, if you look at Mr. Smith, you're looking at the fact that he has done redistricting. He has done the closing of schools. So he has that experience. He could hit the ground running. Again, I think there's just so much good. I didn't see anything really that was a concern in listening to the candidates. I think they were all strong. I'll let other people talk, but those are kind of some of my initial things as I was making notes and looking at our check sheet.
So I also agree with a lot of what Mrs. Casagrande has said. You know, Mr. Smith does have experience being here. And I do remember his tenure on the board. And I do appreciate, as I was saying to my colleagues, tonight, family comes first. And when his child was born, there was something I had to give. And the board was what gave. I actually liked several of the things that Mr. Lippett said. And while Mr. Smith was, I felt I was getting a lot of the MASB handbook out of Mr. Smith. I heard it differently from the way Mr. Lippett and Ms. Crafton came across. You know, we, as I said, we have three, we have four very strong candidates. But I could narrow it down right now to two in my mind.
No?
I'll just, yeah, just thank everyone who did apply. And for the four that came out tonight, it was definitely good to hear in person from each of you. And just to see the passion that you have to serve. And so I think Mrs. Levin already kind of mentioned, just already maybe having seen you guys around before. But I know many of you have, several of you have been at the board meetings. And we might hear you for your two or three minutes of public comment. So it was good to be able to hear a little bit more your heart for why you'd like to be a part of the board here. So thank you for showing up tonight and thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thanks again. I echo the thanks. We had great candidates. And thank you to the selection committee who down selected for us. Appreciate all of you and most acknowledge that it can be thankless in many ways. And yet it can be so rewarding in other ways. A couple of the things that struck me were just kind of differentiating between advocacy and support of public education and our kids, which is what brings us all here. And everyone has that love and that drive and that ambition. But for me personally, I'm really looking for qualities and skill sets that will complement our particular role on the board. So we have some limited roles. We're not part of the day-to-day operations. We are all advocates. But I think more importantly, there are some skills that we bring forward to the board and to the board's specific activities that to me rung most clear in Mr. Lippett. And I think Ms. Crafton has some other experiences with board governance. So that's where I heard that the loudest. I don't know that I heard anybody mention, we have a number of dimensions here. But I think commitment to time required is another one that's on there. And I do feel like there were a couple of candidates that are committed in so many different directions that I find it very hard to understand how they would either parse aside some additional time or maybe not be biased or so involved in organizations at the state level or the county level that it didn't become either a conflict of time or a conflict of interest. And I heard those most poignantly in Ms. Zellner and in Ms. Crafton. Some thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Levin, do you want me to come back to you or are you good? Ms. Levin?
You didn't have to come back to me, but thank you. I think one of the goals that we have here, as a board, a desire, I think, based on previous interactions, has been to try to make things a little bit more moderate here at the table to stop some of the divisiveness that we've seen from the community and the politics playing and all that stuff. And I think that there's one candidate that I heard from tonight that I think represents a great combination of being here. We see that person a lot here. They contribute thoughtful comments here. They aren't necessarily, from my knowledge, known for being super involved in politics, not looking necessarily for another step in an elected position. Looking simply to serve in the role that they are raising their hand for here. And I think that Mr. Lippett is a great representation of what I think we need here on this board in terms of somebody who can thoughtfully look at things, put the time necessary into preparing for votes, who has the professional experience to be an asset to the board. And it's nothing against having an extra educational background on the board. But frankly, the entire district is full of people with an education background, right? The administration is all educators, in my view. The board is like the one place where it's not necessarily an educational view all the time, and that provides a balance. It provides a diversity of thought and of looking at things that I think sometimes is necessary. I've had conversations with people in our administration who acknowledge, you know what? I've never worked in business. And so I don't necessarily see things from the lens of how do I operate the business of the district, looking through the lens of a business. And I think that's an important way to see things. And so I am in support of Mr. Lippett for this role.
Thank you. I'm just going to make a couple of comments and then we'll see where everybody else stands. I just want to thank every single person that came out. I want to thank everyone that put in an application. It's not an easy thing. It's not an easy thing to put yourselves out there. It's not an easy thing to say that I want to do this. So I think I can speak for the whole board and say that we appreciate that you are so passionate and want to do this, and we appreciate every one of you. So thank you for that. And I'm going to go back to what Ms. Levin said. Ms. Levin is putting forth Mr. Lippett. And before we look for a motion or any other discussion, I just want to see where everybody else is standing on that in the situation. Ms. Fernandez.
Well, something that struck me as a differentiator about Mr. Lippett was his emphasis on strategy and planning, which is a huge initiative and it's something that we're currently and presently undertaking. And it felt like more often than not, that was the rationale and the framing for his data-driven decisions and how he would see his way through decisions that are not always a clear slam dunk in one direction or another. And that, to me, was very comforting. I contrast that to a couple of the other candidates where I heard clearly a desire to reflect or be a voice to the community, right? Or to folks that asked them about what's going on in the district. And I know from my time here, and many of you know from many, many more years of time and experience here, that that's not always the role that we're in. And while we're meant to be active listeners and to bring and raise concerns, there are channels for that through the district. And so as I was thinking about the differentiation of what I was hearing across the candidates, I think Mr. Lippett was one where I clearly didn't hear that, being in the center of the community voice. And so that was attractive to me.
Okay, does anybody have any other comments or discussion? Okay. I didn't have a motion.
I would like to. I move the Board of Education to appoint, appoint, appoint Ron. I told you I'm supposed to be a six. I move the Board of Education to appoint Ron Lippett to fill the board vacancy for the unfinished term ending December 31st, 2024. Effective immediately upon acceptance of the appointment, the candidate be qualified for the office.
Mrs. Casagrande. I do not have any further discussion. Mrs. Casagrande.
Yes.
Mrs. Fernandez.
Yes.
Mrs. Levin.
Yes.
Mr. Siegler.
Yes.
Ms. Teist.
Yes.
And Mrs. Kaplan.
Thank you. And congratulations, Mr. Lippett. Oh wait, one more thing on our agenda, and that's public commentary. So we have one card. And that's Mr. Tim Sawmiller.
So I'm the only one, huh?
You are the only one. You know the spiel, so you have about three minutes.
I know.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You mean I can't just take until nine o'clock?
No.
Okay.
Three minutes.
Good evening. Tim Sawmiller, Commerce Township. Well, this has been an eventful month. Are we having fun yet? Allow me to offer congratulations and best wishes to new board member Ron Lippett. And also to offer congratulations and condolences, although I may be wrong in this, to Stephanie Kaplan on becoming board president, because Mr. Bernia's been calling you Madam Vice President. Well, I know you're not supposed to answer things. I guess you'd make that decision later, huh? You see, you're messing up my remarks. Anyway, also best wishes and good luck for all of the board members as you work through a few transitions. I was going to quote the phrase, "May you live in interesting times," but apparently that is derived from a Chinese curse, so I'll skip that one. Dr. Bernia, we hardly knew ye. It was a pleasure to get to know you. War and school's loss was our gain, and now their gain is our loss. I imagine it's an easier commute for you. Good luck, best wishes, and Godspeed to you, Dr. Bernia. That's all I have. We'll be back to regularly scheduled programming next time.
Thank you. With that, we're going to adjourn the meeting at 8:14.